Excellent. Well, with that, I will go ahead and call to order the Wednesday, March 4th, 2020 meeting of the Reno City Planning Commission. And I will start by asking everyone to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'll ask Commissioner Hawkins to lead tonight. Thank you very much. Michelle, can I have roll call, please?
Kathleen Taylor.
Here.
Peter Gower.
Here.
Ed Hawkins.
Here.
John Marshall is absent. Paula Levis is absent. Alex Velto. Mark Johnson.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is public comment. This item is for either public comment on any action item or for any general public comment. Michelle, do we have any request to speak forms on this item?
No, we do not.
Okay. Then I will then move on to item 4.1 under Public Hearings. First one is case number TXT 20-00004, the Police Facility Impact Fee. Sienna, good evening again.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Planning Commissioners, I'll be very brief, given that we covered the topics for this Title 18 text amendment for the most part in the last meeting. So as was discussed, what you have before you tonight is an enabling ordinance. It would add an article to Chapter 1814 of the Reno Municipal Code. And really, this ordinance is completely modeled after our RIF ordinance, or Regional Road Impact Fee. It would adopt the Capital Improvements Program and the Administrative Manual that we discussed in the previous meeting by reference. And did just want to note that it does include that termination date of 10 years or when revenues reach that expansion cost collection threshold, unless otherwise extended by the city council. So with that, I'll conclude. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Again, this is a public hearing, so Michelle, do we have any request to speak forms on this item?
No, we do not.
Anyone wishing to make public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the commission for any questions, comments on this item, or a motion. Mr. Taylor.
Mr. Chair, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay.
Based on compliance with applicable findings, I move to recommend the city council approve the text amendment by ordinance.
Thank you, Commissioner. I have a motion on this item.
Mr. Hawkins, second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Sienna. Next item on our agenda, item 4.2, case number LDC 20-00034, Reno Logistics Center. Start with a presentation from the applicant's representative.
Good evening. For the record, Mike Raely with Christie Corporation, here representing Acres Advisory Group. Also with me tonight are members of our project team, the project applicant, the project engineer, and the project traffic engineer. This is a special use permit request to allow for the construction of a 1.215 million square foot warehouse and distribution facility that includes 15,000 square feet of office located within the industrial zone on North Virginia Street. The special use permit is triggered by residential adjacency and cuts greater than 20 feet fills greater than 10 feet. The project site is located on North Virginia Street between Golden Valley Road and Lemon Drive, directly across the street from the Amazon Distribution Center. These are some pictures of the existing site as it is. It's been developed with several different uses over the years, including some industrial uses. There's various mining activities that have occurred onsite, as you see in this picture. I've got some aerial photos that kind of give you a perspective. Our site is right here with Amazon. You can see some of the other industrial uses within the industrial corridor. Just kind of give you some reference there from some different angles. So as you can see, this is kind of a close-up of the site. There's definitely been some mining, aggregate mining operations that have occurred in the past. There are several little outbuildings that are scattered throughout the property. It's actually an assemblage of eight parcels total. The site is just under 75 acres. As I mentioned, it's master planned and zoned industrial, and it's located in the industrial corridor identified in the reimagined Reno master plan. The use is proposed for warehouse and distribution similar to what you see right across the street with Amazon. It will be accessed from two entry points along North Virginia Street. And Virginia Street will include a new dedicated left turn lane into the site, as well as a deceleration acceleration lane at our western driveway. Here's the site plan with North Virginia Street at the top. You'll see the building. As you can see, there's this kind of large hill in the back is going to retain, which will screen views, as you'll see in a few slides ahead of this, the views to the residential uses to the south. Some perspectives of the building, the northeast corner, the northwest, the rear of the building, which I think is important, is essentially not visible from any of the surrounding properties or Virginia Street. Also, the fact that we sit approximately 20 feet above Virginia Street as you come down, Virginia Street kind of dips in that area. You'll really see the landscaping and the embankment, not the front of the building as you travel along Virginia Street. These are some pictures from the adjoining residential uses that I actually pulled off of Zillow, so I didn't creep into anybody's backyards to get these. These came from online. This is kind of a key map of where those houses are, and then pictures from their backyards. As you can see, the natural topography largely screens the site. Site is not visible from the majority of residences to the south. This would be kind of a worst-case scenario where you can just get a glimpse of the Amazon building, but we do have a very dense landscape buffer along the south side. And the project site sits up to 20 feet, 22 feet below the grade of these existing homes, so it will be very well screened from the adjoining residential uses. The majority of the homes look out, like I say, to this embankment, as you can see. So the site is entirely screened. And there's another example of where really the views, there will be no view impact whatsoever. Once again, the topography does allow for highly effective screening and buffering. The building is, as I mentioned, essentially kind of notched in, so it's 20 feet above Virginia Street, but well below the grade of the homes to the south. The railroad right away that separates us from the residential is approximately 200 feet wide, so the closest home is 240 feet to the property line to the building. It's 300 feet to the closest residence, much further to that on the west side, but that would be the worst-case scenario. We are going to incorporate the dark sky standards in the project as well. We do have dense landscape buffer along the south to make sure that that, any visible areas of the building are screened. We did include a noise analysis and a traffic analysis as part of this, and we've incorporated all the recommendations from those studies into this. I think it's also important to note that the project does sewer to Tom Whorf and not to the Stead Treatment Plant, and that we are incorporating the new 1 to 1.3 drainage standards. We also plan to, because we have the office space and quite a bit of parking, we do plan to incorporate provisions for electrical vehicle charging stations when the project's developed. And with that, I would like to state that we are in concurrence with all the conditions of approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mike. Good presentation from staff, and call you back with questions. Heather, good evening.
Good evening. Heather Manzo, Associate Planner for the Record. And so Mike did a pretty good job of kind of laying out the requests before you this evening. I just wanted to note, the main areas of consideration as we were moving through this process really had to do with the residential adjacency along the western side, as well as the possible impacts to the residents to the south. It should be noted, the only special use permit trigger for residential adjacency is to the west. As Mike had pointed out, this railroad line separates the residences from the south. However, we did work with the applicant to make sure that their design does take into consideration residences in both directions. In addition to that, through the process, the applicant did provide a letter of support from the single residence that's located directly to the west of the property. And with that, they have provided a pretty robust landscape plan that really does provide for once-mature, you know, sufficient screening to the best of their ability from the view from the south. In addition, the hill that Mike had mentioned will help to enhance that visual screening as well. The other aspect of this request that we really did pay attention to is that a 1.2 million square foot building is a pretty sizable building. And what the industrial standards require is that articulation be provided on the building front facing the street. But because there's the residential adjacency special use permit trigger, it requires that some of the materials that are used along that more interesting elevation be carried through to all four sides. And so we did work with the applicant to get to a place where the main elevation that we had concern over, that southern elevation, has incorporated building materials, colors, and canopies that have been incorporated from other parts of the building. And as Mike had noted, it's not anticipated this project's going to be highly visible from the properties to the south, but they have done what they're able to through grading and placement of the building to mitigate whatever impacts may occur. They did provide an acoustical analysis. That information's in the staff report. I did receive comments from the NAB. Those were forwarded to you a couple of days ago. And the comment really was that along North Virginia Street, there needs to be a way to get the trucks out of the main lanes so that it doesn't cut off the flow of traffic on North Virginia Street. As Mike had stated, that has been addressed through their design. In addition to that, I didn't receive any phone calls or emails from members of the public on this, and staff is recommending approval of the special use permit request, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Heather. Again, this is a public hearing. Before I open it up for public comment, I will bring it back to the commission for disclosures. I'll start with Commissioner Taylor.
I visited the site, and I talked with the representatives, or the applicant's representative. Sorry, thanks.
Commissioner Johnson, I met with the applicant's representative and familiar with the site.
Commissioner Velto, the same.
Commissioner Hawkins, as did I.
Commissioner Gower, as did I.
I have one request to speak form on this item from Stacy Thompson. Just state your name when you get there, and you're good to go.
My name is Robert Thompson. We live due west of the project. We have four pieces of property that join the property, the project. And as far as we're concerned, everything's fine. It sets it a, thank you. It's actually the little piece that, where is it? There it is. Does it work?
You just use your finger on that one. There you go.
Right here. These properties right here. There's three right here, and then there's another one right there. That's where the house is. All these properties are all ours, and we have no problem with anything back here. In fact, that piece right here, where is it? There, is totally vacant, and don't even know if the man who owned it died, and don't even know if he's even done anything with it. And he died a few years back. But as far as we're concerned, there's no noise issue. For one thing, there's a big bank that runs right along here that is probably 15, 20 feet high, that blocks out most of the noise that even comes our way. We hear it before anybody else, and nobody else hears it on the other side of us. So as far as the noise is concerned, there's not a problem. You do have a problem with the street. That's your problem. And if you guys don't fix it, it's just going to stay the way it is. But the highway itself isn't built for the traffic you got all the way down the road, let alone for anymore, plus the ones that are coming in there. So if you don't widen it, sooner or later, you're going to have a bigger problem. As far as that warehouse is concerned, that's a good warehouse. It's going to bring a lot of jobs. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle, do we have any additional request to speak forms on this item?
No, we do not.
Anyone else wishing to make public comment on this item? With that, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the commission for questions. Would you like to get us started? Anyone? Questions or comments? Discussion? Commissioner Gower?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any questions. I think the applicant and staff appeared to work together really well to identify all of the issues and concerns, and put together a project that really complies with our code and all of our provisions. So I'm comfortable with it, and if there's no other discussion, I'm ready to make a motion.
Mr. Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Taylor?
Just because it was just brought up, can you talk a little bit about the traffic and what the improvements might be? And because I see Paul out there, and I don't want him to be here for nothing.
I might actually defer that to Paul, just so I don't misspeak on him. Well, good evening. For the record, I'm Paul Suleyki. In terms of... Okay. Is the little, is it remote here? Oh, with that, you think I'd be more proficient, huh? Okay, so the traffic study, the traffic study recommends a left turn lane for the east driveway to the right of the screen. That's the primary entrance driveway. The west driveway, it has, there's a potential turn conflict there, so we're not having left turns there at that driveway, left turns in at that driveway. At the west driveway, we're providing a decel lane and then an acceleration lane for the trucks, so that the trucks can get out of the through traffic. So overall, the driveway improvements, the intersections, the driveways are operating at a good levels of service, and we've addressed the queuing conflict with the adjacent driveway. And with these turn mitigations, even these, the large vehicles will operate acceptably with good levels of service and efforts to minimize their impacts on the through traffic.
So just to reinforcement, you said that it operates at acceptable levels of service with the improvements.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Commissioner Gower, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In the case of LDC 20-00034, Reno Logistics Center, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the special use permit subject to conditions, and I can make all of the applicable findings with those conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Gower. Have a motion? Looking for a second?
Mr. Hawkins, second.
I have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Good luck with your project. Next item on the agenda, item number 4.3, case number LDC 20-00040, Washoe County School District Stead Boulevard Zone Change. Prior to the presentation from the applicant's representative, I will disclose, this is Commissioner Johnson, that firm I work for has an ongoing relationship with Washoe County School District, and I've been advised to recuse myself from any items that they are the applicant for. So with that, I will turn it over to Commissioner Taylor and come back for the next item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much.
Let's just give him a second, too.
Okay.
Go away.
Get to the cone of silence. Thank you very much. For the record, Andy Durling with Wood Rogers, representing the school district. Before you tonight is a zone change request for a parcel of land located, 34-acre parcel of land located on Stead Boulevard, just to the north of US 95, or 395, sorry. The site is currently home to both Stead Elementary School as well as O'Brien Middle School. The change that we have requested is a change from mixed-use North Virginia Transit Corridor to public facility. This parcel was identified in the new reimagined Reno as public, quasi-public land use designation. If you recall, the North Virginia Transit Corridor was effectively removed from the master plan, and over time, that mixed-use zoning will ultimately go away. So this is a step in that direction. Mixed use is not, is no longer conforming zoning district under the new master plan designations. It's not necessarily consistent with the existing uses on the site of the existing schools and many other schools throughout the region or zone public facility. This public facility zoning would conform better to the master plan. It does not change the existing school uses. It brings this zoning into further conformance and meets all the findings of a zoning map amendment. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Andy. And next, a lot of presentation from staff, please.
Kyle Chisholm, Assistant Planner for the Record. I don't even know if we need to look at this map again. He just showed it. But I don't really have anything to add other than the, Andy was right, this is a conforming zone, the PF zone's a conforming zone of the current PQP master plan designation, whereas the current mixed use is not. I would just add that the, as far as the allowed uses go, between the two zones, the PF zone is much more restrictive, pretty much across the board for all types of uses. Just one other thing to add is future, just for future development purposes, because this property is located adjacent to a residentially zone, PUD to the east, it will require a site plan review, administrative site plan review process to, for further development. So physical development would be analyzed at that time. It was reviewed by the Ward for NAB on February 20th, and I didn't receive any comments from the NAB or the general public about the request. And with that being said, staff was able to make all the applicable zoning map amendment findings, and recommends that the planning commission recommends to the council approval. And I'm here for any questions.
Thank you, Kyle. I will ask commissioners for disclosures now, starting with Commissioner Gower.
Thank you. No disclosures.
Mr. Hawkins, visit the site.
Commissioner Velto, no disclosures.
Commissioner Taylor visited the site and spoke briefly with the applicant's representative. Michelle, do we have any comment forms?
No, we do not.
Nope. Does anybody wish to make any public comment? Seeing none, I guess we'll bring it back. Close public comment, bring it back to the commission for questions, comments, discussion, a motion?
Thank you. Can you just explain, I guess I'm confused why this is coming before us at this time? Is there yet the kind of motive behind it?
With the change, the reimagined Reno master plan, it changed the designation on this. A school is still allowed in the mixed-use zoning, but there's other design standards that come along with it. The school district is looking at a redevelopment of O'Brien Middle School in particular, and so the public facility zoning is going to be more appropriate, looking, you know, kind of long-term for the future use of that site.
Commissioner Hawkins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Andy, I've got one question. Is the eight acres that was with Stead 40 going to be incorporated into this same zoning?
No, that is another school site. I believe that was acquired by the school district for an elementary school, so that would be a separate school project.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, this is just the one parcel that's home to O'Brien instead, O'Brien Middle School and Stead Elementary.
Thank you.
Commissioners, other questions? Comments? Motion?
Mr. Hawkins, in the case of LDC 20-000-40, Washoe County School District Stead Boulevard Zone Change, based upon the compliance with the applicable findings, I move to recommend that city council approve the zoning map amendment by ordinance.
Velto, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? None. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Andy. You come back, Mr. Chairman.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, case, or item 4.4, case number LDC 20-00042, Flowing Tide Pub Condition Amendment. Start with the presentation from the applicant.
Good evening. Okay, my name is Jason Tolati. I'm the managing partner for the Flowing Tide Pubs. So I'd like to give you a little bit of background on our organization, if I may. We have been operating in northern Nevada for over 20 years now. I have one operational partner, Justin Moscow, right here. I have two, we have two silent partners, and we have extremely deep roots in this community. We employ approximately 200 employees. We have been fortunate enough to expand to what will be our seventh location with this new acquisition. So we're extremely excited about this new location at McCarran in Mariloma. Now, of course, I didn't do my due diligence and entered into this lease agreement and serious renovation process, and without the knowledge that we were bound by some restrictions on our hours. So as I'm sure you know, we've submitted this application for a special use permit to operate 24 hours. We truly believe that there will be no negative implications on the community in doing so. I'd like to bring up several points to kind of explain our business model and shed some light on our intentions in this new location. First of all, we pride ourselves on being very professional and responsible business operators. We have a near impeccable history of safely serving alcohol over the years. To reference comments from the police department, the proposed hours of operation are appropriate due to historic maintenance and management practices of the facility for similar uses, and based on the proposed operator's Flowing Tide Pub history of calls for service being at or below average for the type of use. So furthermore, we feel that we have a quality food and beverage product that we would like to offer 24 hours a day. The extended hours will solely be marketed to local residents in the area that either get off work late or get up early, so forth. Now, as you know, there was in fact a special use permit in place for the previous owner, and I quote, "to establish nightclub offering live entertainment and operations till 1:00 a.m. on Fridays and Saturdays, and operations till 6:00 a.m. the other five days of the week," end quote. Now, we've absolutely no intentions of any sort of nightclub, live music, DJ, live entertainment of any sort. So there's been some turnover in this location over the last several years. In fact, it sat vacant for many years. You probably know, originally, I believe it was Porky's Bar and Grill, most recently Hellfire Tavern. Food and beverage industry is and is becoming more and more challenging all the time. We're investing a great deal into this location, and we'd like to take advantage of every opportunity to generate revenue that we can. We have the utmost confidence that with the minimal amount of additional business that we would draw throughout these extended hours, that we would compromise any of the surrounding services, infrastructure, or traffic patterns. We have a very clean, safe, and comfortable environment, and are committed to conducting business in a professional manner, being a great neighbor. As we do with our other locations, we look forward to supporting the community, the schools, and various organizations in the area. That's really all I have right now. Thank you very much for your consideration. Please feel free to fire any questions. Out.
Okay, we'll get a presentation from staff, and then we'll call you back with some questions.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Kyle, good evening. I didn't get to welcome you on the last one, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Taylor had it all under control.
She did. Kyle Chisholm, Assistant Planner for the Record. Also here tonight, Joe Henry with our code enforcement team, in case there's any questions for him on that. So here's the subject site. Probably familiar with it. It's a longstanding commercial center within the city. It's on the corner of Mariloma and South McCarran Boulevard. So the property is zoned, excuse me, community commercial. It's surrounded by a variety of different zoning designations, specifically MF, is that right? Oh, sorry. Property is zoned AC. Surrounded by CC to the, community commercial to the east, AC to the south, SF6, which is across McCarran to the west, and MF14, property directly to the north, which is currently a public park, Mariloma Park. As the applicant has brought up, this, this is a request to amend an existing special use permit, specifically condition number 11, which restricted the hours of operation for the previous applicant, or the previous occupant, tenant of this space that received the special use permit back in 2017. And with that, in your staff report, and that color is not coming up very great, but you'll see the strike through, it's actually in red on my paper here, but those are some of the additional conditions as kind of going through, looking at the new tenant, the new type of business that is at this location, the fact that there is now no nightclub component as part of this request. So that's been removed. Many of these conditions were directly related to that nightclub use. And basically, this is just a cleanup of the existing SUP. The, the one that specifically, part of this, the applicant's request is condition number 11, which restricted the hours on the weekends, and specifically till 1:00 a.m. And so, the applicant, as stated, would like to be open 24 hours on those days, as well as the rest of the week. And staff, as the applicant mentioned, we received comments from RPD, very supportive of the request. I've worked with code enforcement, and there didn't seem to be any significant concerns there as well. There's already some mechanisms in place, mitigation measures to protect the residential, the multifamily apartments to the east, which is the closest residential uses. There's a combination of landscaping and a wall, as identified in the staff report, as well as automatic closing mechanisms on the rear doors. Also, the rear doors are not to be used for any type of customer entrance, just daytime activities like loading, unloading, taking out the trash, stuff, stuff of that nature. And so, with all that being said, this did go, also go to the Ward 3 NAB, and I did not receive any comments, but some of the, I didn't receive any formal comments, but some of the public commenters were in support of the request. Basically stated that this is a rehab, a good rehabilitation of an existing center that struggled. And so, staff was able to make all the applicable findings and recommends that the planning commission approve the amended special use permit. And I'm here for any questions you have.
Okay, thank you, Kyle. Again, before I open it for public comment, I'll ask the commissioners for disclosures. I'll start with Commissioner Taylor.
No disclosures, or I'm familiar with the site, thank you.
Mr. Johnson, as am I.
Commissioner Veltto, the same.
I'm familiar with the site.
Commissioner Gower, as am I.
Okay. Michelle, do we have any request to speak forms on this item?
No, I do not.
Anyone wishing to make public comment on this item? Hey, seeing none, I will close that and bring it back to the commission for questions, comments.
Mr. Chairman, can I just ask a couple of clarification questions of the applicant?
Sure.
First question, just to clarify that during all, the extended hours, you'll be offering food service with the alcohol?
That's correct, absolutely, full menu.
Great. And then, the other question is, the other facilities that you have in town, the other businesses, are those also 24 hours?
We have two other 24-hour facilities, two of the six.
So it's a functioning, a well-functioning model that you're proposing?
It is, yes, yeah, we're, it's, in fact, it's a preferred concept for us, for various reasons.
Okay, thank you. And just one more clarification question, if I could, Mr. Chairman, for Kyle. Kyle, just to clarify procedurally, what would happen if the applicant tried to do any sort of a nightclub use without these conditions in place? I mean, what would happen? Now, I'm not saying they would, I just want to know what protections we have.
Well, they would obviously have to go through the proper channels. They'd have to apply for a business license to do that, and we would not approve that business license, because this modified special use permit removed that component. And so, the, the recommendation for approval is based, is based on that, that component being removed as part of their request. And so if they did operate in a nightclub, then that would fall into, Mr. Henry here's jurisdiction, per se, so. I think that answered your question?
Sure does.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner?
Kyle, before you get down, I just kind of want to follow up on that. So, the 24-hour use for this function, without the special use permit in place, is allowed by right per the overall zoning of the district? Or of the, of the, the site has an arterial commercial, so is 24-hour use allowed by right, and it was just restricted by this existing special use permit?
Good question. So the, the existing special use permit that is being modified here, it was previous, for a previous tenant, I don't know if you remember, Health Fire Saloon, the request was for a bar and restaurant use, which the bar needs a special use permit in, in this zone. So, and then also 24-hour operations and a nightclub. So to answer your question specifically, no, the AC zone does not allow 24 hours by right. It's limited from 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. But they, this property has a special use permit for 24-hour operations. But there is a condition of approval that restricted that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's, it's a unique situation.
Okay, thanks, Kyle.
Additional questions? Commissioner Veltto?
I had a question for, for you, Kyle, about some of these conditions that we're recommending removing. Eight has to do with putting a sign in a window that notifies of the manager's phone number, and then part of nine has to do with cameras. Are those unique to, I guess, nightclubs? Or are those common with 24-hour bars? Yeah, you could fill in with this.
Yeah, for the record, Joe Henry, Senior Code Enforcement Officer. These are the standard conditions that we're working on with planning whenever we do have a nightclub use, because we want to address those things that go along with nightclubs. The noise, the having the cameras, so we can have a security system, a security plan. But, and that's why having, taking all these out, that makes us comfortable, that it's not really flowing tide we're worried about. In code enforcement, we're worried about the next tenant. So if we had this, and we allowed the 24-hour use, and we didn't take all this stuff out, then, next tenant comes in, well, it's already got a SUP for a nightclub, and now this can go 24 hours, and we have all kinds of trouble. So, that's why we support it this way.
That makes sense. So I guess my question is, is it, it's not common to put camera restrictions on 24-hour, or camera requirements on 24-hour bars?
No, it's strictly for the nightclub use that we do that.
Yeah, and just to add to that, I, another, another reason for the removal of the signage that this requires is already in place. It's already, it was already installed with the previous tenant, so it's already been done. Yeah.
Commissioners, additional questions?
It took me a minute, so I appreciate it. I, I see the initial, the original special use permit is very specific, that it allows for operations between 11:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m., and then does restrict it after that. So you're right, it is a unique condition. The problem was, I was here when that happened, and I can't believe it was 2016 that that happened, so. Thank you for answering that, sending me to the right place. So, Commissioner Gower.
I share that too. I was surprised that that was four years ago. Ready to make a motion, if you're willing, Mr. Chairman.
Please do, Commissioner Gower.
In the case of LDC 20-00042, Flowing Tide Pub Condition Amendment, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the amended special use permit, subject to the conditions listed in the staff report, and I can make all of the findings with those conditions.
Thank you, Commissioner, I have a motion.
Commissioner Taylor, a second.
Motion and a second, further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Good luck with your project.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda, case number, or item 4.5, case number LDC 20-00036, Splash Express Car Wash. We'll start with a presentation from the applicant.
Hello, my name is Hector, Hector Santos. I, I request to my association to build a patio cover.
Hold up, not that, I'm looking for the applicant for this actual project.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. Go see, go see Michelle, she'll get you squared away with what you need to do for that. Okay. Not here? I don't, don't have an applicant? Okay. I guess I'll have a staff report. Brooke?
All right, looks like I-
Actually, hang on just a sec, do you want me to keep going? Okay, Brooke, go ahead and do your presentation.
All right, Brooke Oswald, Associate Planner with the City of Reno, for the record. Good evening, Commissioners and Chair. I will try to modify my presentation a little bit to help fill in some of the gaps on this. Project site is located along Peckham Avenue, surrounding things are, that you may know are Meadowwood Mall, the Reno Airport, and Pine Middle School. There's currently an existing self-service car wash on that site. It is inactive currently. The surrounding uses, you can see through the parcel map, there are several condominium units, multifamily units, single-family housing, and then we have various mini-storage and some other small industrial uses. The parcel that the site is located on, that block frontage, there is a gas station on the western corner, a small dated strip mall, and then various underdeveloped parcels on that site. Project is located on the corner of Peckham and Filbert. The surrounding zoning on that is all mixed use. That is in the CRC or the Convention Regional Center, which has some specific guidelines in that. One of that, one of those guidelines is the FAR requirement. It said it should be 3, .33. The, what, part of the request on this SUP is a reduction of that FA requirement. The proposed automatic car wash is .21 FAR, and then we have an additional .9 in canopies that'll be covering the vacuums and the entrances of, of that facility. If you could just bring that up just a little bit, Michelle. This year's SUP is for the building orientation in that MU zone. What we usually look is that street forward, and pushed out to the corner, and that we would look that the long section of that building would be out towards the street. So with the automatic car washes, they are unique in how they function. They require stacking, how that building orients is a lot, how that site's going to orient, and how that's going to be. So the other, there are some residential uses to the east of this project site, and the applicant felt it was best to move the larger equipment vacuums further away from those residents, and so they backed them to the western section of this site. So you can see, there's two entrances, one along Filbert and one along Peckham, to distribute the, to offer several ways out to reduce that stacking and conflicts there. There's about 322 feet in that stacking lane, that'll hold about 17 cars. Our engineering staff reviewed that and felt comfortable that that would reduce overall conflicts. Down just a little bit. There is additionally, with moving this building from that forward corner position back over this, there's a large amount of existing landscape that exists on that western portion that will be maintained. That will also act as additional further buffering of light and noise to those surrounding residential uses. Additionally, excuse me. Additionally, a sound study was provided. Sound study indicated that there would be no additional impacts past our residential adjacency sound codes on this to those existing residents, and and the traffic study that came back, there was no significant impact on that traffic study. This is an older plan, as, as you can notice, there wasn't originally an additional existing entrance here that has been removed to limiting overall pedestrian conflicts and traffic conflicts in that area. Additionally, Peckham Street, the sidewalk and the curb are in poor repair. They will be required to, to repair those as they move forward. There, there are restricted hours of operation. They are specifically, as was noted in the, the previous, our hours of operations are 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. That, that is allowed in this zoning. We have restricted the vacuums and the automatic car wash. They can operate from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Additionally, their staff can do cleanup and those things in those hours before those times. It is a unique project, as I, as I said, where it's located, it is really supportive of several of our master plan policies, even though a car wash, and it's not meeting those architectural MU requirements, there is, those policies of revitalization, it's a highly underused parcel at this point, our growth tiers, it's on the inner, in our inner tier. All our services and infrastructure are present at this site. And also, and then those infrastructure improvements that we'll see as this comes in, is the improvement of the sidewalk and those other pedestrian amenities. With the conditions as written, and the material that the applicant has provided, staff can make all of the applicable findings and recommends approval. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Brooke. We're just going to switch things up tonight, because it's one of those kinds of nights, and we'll let you do your presentation first, and then we'll let the applicant's representative do his. So, we'll just try it out, it's kind of a trial balloon, and we'll see if that works, and probably go back to the way it was before.
Thank you for your expressed compassion, Mr. Chair. You don't want to hear the details. Thank you, Commissioners, John Krompotic representing the applicant. Brooke did a fairly thorough job, I got a few things to add. Obviously, we're in an agreement with the staff report. I would, would like to add one simple change, it's actually further mitigation to the hours of operation. In talking with the owner applicant today, if, if the commission's agreeable, since we do have residential across the street of Filbert, we wanted to go to 8:00 a.m. It's a later start, an hour later, and an hour earlier on the close, 8:00 to 8:00, would be agreeable, and actually proposed on our behalf. He said he just doesn't need any more time than that after he gave it further consideration. It's the only thing I have with respect to the conditions. There's the site, not to be, again, not to be redundant. I think what's important in the context of MU discussions and the standards is that it is about nine-tenths of a mile away from Virginia Street, which is the primary corridor when we're really trying to accomplish MU types of criteria. So there's really why we're here, is to deal with the FAR issue of .21 and the alternate building orientation, as summarized by Brooke. And there's our current site plan. Actually, I'd like to go to, I think this is healthy and processed and working with staff, but here's the site plan we came in with, and you look at the RTC letter, it talked about two driveways, one is too close to the intersection. We eliminated that driveway, that's important for operation on Arturial Street, it's important for safety. So now we have the single driveway they come in. It also allows us the stacking that was mentioned, 17 cars of stacking, and just a very clean free throw, free operation there. Here is condition five, basically illustrates the curb that's put down here. Actually, we have permanent curb there, temporary curb here. There was concern about the, you know, going through this adjacent dirt- There was concern about the, you know, going through this adjacent dirt lot, so we have a simple solution for that. That is the current site plan. Also, actually, on the south here, we have temporary curb going there. That's an approved access easement, but for future use. We did the noise study on a voluntary basis, again, because of the use and residential proximity. It come out good. I'm sure you guys have heard many times from noise experts, I've been involved in many of these myself, that the noise standards in Reno are very aggressive. I was looking at their chart, and basically, you're almost at conversation tone for the daytime hours to meet that threshold in the code. With the proposed mitigation, which we do accept, it will meet all of the standards, both night and day. Of course, night's not going to come into play unless it's wintertime, where you're doing hours of operation at 8:00 p.m. when the sun's down. There's the site plan. I like to show things like this because I think, and I hope the commission would agree, that, excuse me, current site fenced off. That when you're looking at a community, looking at design, what is one of the first signs of blight? A fenced-off building that's closed. It's not a good thing. It's not healthy for a neighborhood. It's not good for the environment. So reinvestment, which happens to be the same kind of use with a lot more gingerbread and bells and whistles, is an improvement to the site. We talked about, in here, you can see it in the site plan, but if you imagine coming in here, and then you have that screen that we're gonna have with more vegetation here, and then, of course, we're keeping the large mature trees, both deciduous and the evergreen on the exterior. There's some ideas of the building elevation. And that's pretty much all I have, so I'll just be here for any questions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, John. Before I open up for public comment, I will bring it to the Commission for Disclosure, starting with Commissioner Gower.
Commissioner Gower, I'm familiar with the site.
Commissioner Hawkins, as did I.
Commissioner Velto, no disclosures.
Commissioner Johnson, familiar with the site?
Commissioner Taylor, as am I.
I do have a request to speak form on this. Hector indicates he does not wish to make a statement.
No.
Okay. Does not wish to make a statement, but is in favor of the project. Okay. Alright, any other additional request to speak forms on this item? If you've seen none, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the Commission for Questions. Commissioner Hawkins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. John, if I could. Stacking, Reno stacking on Peckham?
No, if you look at the worst-case stacking scenario, if you had a big boomer day and a lot of car washers, 17 cars internal.
Okay.
Yeah, you know, behind the tunnel and then through the site, that's a lot of capacity. When you're at 50:00 p.m. peak hour trips, it just easily takes care of itself.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gower?
Mr. Chairman, John, related question with the internal circulation. If you could put up the site plan.
Of course.
My question is, how do you reconcile with that stacking, the two ingress points, the one coming in from the east?
This one here.
Yeah, and then the one coming down from the north.
Good question.
How do you resolve that?
Right there, see that stop bar? You know, so people see it, if somebody was coming in here, that's, I guess, either direction on Filbert, you know, they would come in, this person would have to be aware, we put a stop sign here. So it's kind of a built-in yield condition. Takes care of itself.
So how do you avoid a scenario, like if they're stacking, coming down from the north, to avoid stacking coming in from the east?
Here?
Yeah, yeah, so you've got-
Coming in here.
Yeah, you've got cars coming down, they're stacked in that, that south-facing drive aisle there, but you only, really only have room for like, one car that would potentially be coming in from the east. How do you mitigate the potential for stacking there? Because if I'm driving down, what is that, Filbert there? To the east, what's the roadway there?
Yeah, that's Filbert right here.
Filbert, yeah. If I'm coming in that direction and I see, okay, there's a, you know, a stack of five cars there, I'm not gonna go wait in that line off of Peckham, I'm gonna come down Filbert and try to get in that way.
So you're saying, coming in here, and then there's also a queue here?
Yeah. I'm just trying to resolve this in my mind of how it works.
I think you're probably, you're looking at a scenario that probably doesn't work with that much stacking demand.
Okay.
That's what I think. I mean, we said we have capacity for 17. The peak hour numbers for the operation, not only we're close to that, in terms of, you know, how many cars you're pumping through this each day. So the idea, of course, is, so yeah, what you're saying, I agree with you. If you were gonna turn left here and turn in and do this, it's probably not very realistic. If you're coming up Filbert, you're gonna turn here?
Right.
If you see somebody there, I think it's gonna take care of itself, right? You're gonna move on. You're not gonna stand in Filbert. I mean, there's just not this, this much demand for, for, you know, this car wash, those kind of numbers are, and we're thinking that, you know, this is primary, and that it all, between here and here, is your 17 cars.
Okay.
I hope that's, you know, a thorough enough and trustworthy enough answer, but, you know, this gentleman's done operation of these, and we've thought it through with the manufacturer, with the operator, and then with kind of the, you know, the analysis we do and development with traffic engineering.
Okay, thanks, John.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Comments or discussion? More motion?
I'll make a motion. In the case of LDC 20-00036, Splash Express Car Wash, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the special use permit, subject to conditions. And I can make all the findings.
Thank you, Commissioner. I have a motion.
Just for clarification, does that include the amendment of the hours from 8:00 to 8:00?
No, I did not include that, but I will. To include the new times from 8:00 to 8:00.
Thank you, Commissioner. So that's a modification of item four, under the conditions.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I have a motion, looking for a second.
Commissioner Taylor, a second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Good luck with your project.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item, 4.6, case number LDC 20-00043, Sports Mobile. Start with a presentation from the applicant.
Good evening, Mr. Commissioner and other Commissioners. My name is Darren Lynch. I'm the architect, representing the owner, who I have here with me, as well as the contractor. And we're seeking a special use permit for the ability to sale recreational vehicles. This is the project site, and it is all surrounded by community commercial. And nearby, there's many other recreational vehicle locations. There's Harley-Davidson and Honda, as well as Kawasaki right next to our site. This site originally had a SUP for Arctic Cat, and that building was never constructed when the economy turned down. This building is for the sale of the vehicles and accessories for the recreational vehicles. This is an example of the type of vehicles they do. They're manufactured at a facility in Fresno, California, and this is a dealership here in Reno. And so we need a special use permit for the transaction of the sale. And that's the only reason we need special use permits. This is a, just a reference, that's the building. It's under construction currently. And that's what it will look like when it's done. We have the hotel next door. We have it fully screened from the hotel with landscaping and articulation on that side of the building as well. And be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Darren. We'll call you back after staff presentation.
Good evening, Brooke Oswald, Associate Planner for the record. As was detailed, the proposed use of this site is compatible, very compatible with the existing uses being recreational vehicle sales directly across the parking lot, Harley-Davidson, and some others. This is one of the few vacant lots that we have left along that corridor there. They do, as was detailed in the staff report, they actually do have an approved building permit. It's been reviewed and approved, and I believe they're under construction. The request for the SUP, they will currently, you know, if they came up, they could sell the items, the accessory items, and some of those other items that they're doing there. This is really to sell the units that are manufactured in San Francisco, bring them here, and to sell them here. There is a six-foot solid wall to the west of the project site, adjacent to those multifamily, that provides adequate screening both for noise and light glare through that parking lot. See this, staff sees this as sort of a minimal impact use on those surrounding neighbors, and there is mitigation already in place to take care of that. With that, staff can make all the applicable findings and recommends approval of the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Brooke. Any public comment? We'll be opened up after I have disclosures. I'll start with Commissioner Taylor.
No disclosures.
Commissioner Johnson, no disclosures.
Mr. Hawkins, no disclosures.
Mr. Gower, familiar with the site?
Thank you, Michelle. Do we have any request to speak forms on this item?
We do not.
Anyone wishing to make public comment on this item? If you've seen none, I'll bring it back to the Commission for Questions. Or comments? More motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion.
Mr. Taylor?
In the matter of case number LDC 2000043, Sports Mobile, based on compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the special use permit, subject to conditions, and I can make all the findings.
Thank you, Commissioner. I have a motion, looking for a second.
Commissioner Gower, a second.
I have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Good luck with your project.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, item 4.7, case number LDC 20-00041, Canyon Center Condition Amendment. We'll start with a presentation from the applicant. Andy, good evening.
Thank you very much. Just waiting for a PowerPoint to come up here. For the record, Andy Durling with Wood Rogers, I'm filling in this evening for my colleague Stacy Huggins. This is representing the applicant, Planet Fitness, for this condition amendment within the Canyon Center. The Canyon Center development is a commercial development located on the southeast corner of Seventh Street and McCarran Boulevard, right at the terminus, or eastern terminus of Mayan Avenue. The condition amendment that we are requesting is specifically related to hours of operation, and specifically related to Assessor Parcel Number 00534013, which is owned by Planet Fitness. Canyon Center was originally approved back in 1993 with 41 conditions of approval. On condition 24B at that time, limited hours of operations to, with the exception of two businesses, that was the Albertsons, which is the larger, big box there, shown in the cyan color, and an Osko Drug, which is just to the north of that. Normal hours of operation for businesses in this area are 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., which is the standard City of Reno hours of operation. Personal fitness facilities do not generate a significant amount of traffic or noise, so allowing this business to operate at 24 hours a day will not have impacts on adjacent properties. The building is located, you know, kind of in the, in line with the other buildings that have been constructed out there. It's about 220 feet from the nearest residential structure, which is located to the east. The primary client access is on the west side of the building, at the front of the building. There is 24-hour staff on site, so there is, you know, it's a secure environment. Typically, they see about 50 to 60 clients entering between those hours of 11:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m., the majority of which are in the early morning hours, the 5:00 a.m. workout crew that's going in early before work. Deliveries to this facility would be limited to normal working hours. This request is to amend condition 24B to clean up the language of it. It would address specific parcels rather than these old users, Albertsons and Osko, which neither exist anymore. It would allow for 24-hour per day operation on these parcels, and would expand the list to three parcels to include the Planet Fitness parcel, which is Assessor Parcel 00534013. It's also worth noting that directly to the south of this, the, if I can use the pointer, this parcel here was recently approved for urgent care facility that also operates 24 hours a day. So with that, I am not Stacy Huggins, but I would be happy to answer any of your questions.
Thank you, Andy. I look forward to Stacy coming back as you at the next meeting. Brooke, good evening.
Good evening. Brooke Oswald, Associate Planner for the record. The applicant's representative did a fairly thorough job of explaining this project. This originally came, this is another one of those projects that we do have an approved building permit on. They are under construction of this. Through that building permit process, we did discover that, even though it's Planet Fitness and not 24-Hour Fitness, we did assume that their business model was now moving to that 24-hour model, which most of, most fitness centers now do, and did ask if that was the case, and discovered that, under the SUP, that was originally approved back in 1991, that this use was not allowed to be 24 hours. Specifically, that SUP also, as was, as was stated, called out a Albertsons and a Osko Drug. We have on those parcels, those two adjacent parcels, changed that to a grocery anchor and to a drug anchor. So those two can exist as a drug and a grocery still, but that allows different users to come in. It's a market, a grocery store and a drugstore there now. Staff's analysis of this, we saw this as minimal impact. It's with sort of low traffic generation. Should be noted, the police report through the SEPT actually saw this as an improvement of having people there at additional hours, actually improved the overall safety of the site, as that went through. So with that, staff can make all the applicable findings, and, or as far as this recommendation for the SUP, and recommends approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Brooke. Once again, I will ask Commissioners for disclosures. I'll start with Commissioner Taylor.
I'm familiar with the site.
Commissioner Johnson, previously visited the site?
Commissioner Velto, familiar with the site?
Commissioner Hawkins, familiar with the site?
Mr. Gower, familiar with the site?
Thank you, everyone. Michelle, do we have any request to speak forms on this item?
No, we do not.
Okay, then I will move on to questions, comments, or discussion from the Commission? Or a motion? Mr. Gower?
Okay. Case of LDC 20-00041, Canyon Center Condition Amendment, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the amendment to the special use permit.
Commissioner Velto, a second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I just have one comment. So we are cleaning up all three uses with this, right, Brooke? Okay, thank you. Okay, I have a motion, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Alright, moving on on the agenda. It's been pulled. Okay, so we're on to item five, discussion and potential appointment by the Planning Commission for one member and an alternate to serve on the Design Review Committee to review Skyway plans.
And for the record, Angela Foose, this one is going to be continued to a future meeting.
Okay, excellent. And we'll move on to item six, Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Liaison Report. Mr. Taylor, do you want to take this one?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We met last week. What did we do? I think?
There was one small item on the agenda that was allowing-
It was like a four-minute meeting, I'm not kidding.
There was, there was a change to some allowable uses in Spanish Springs.
A senior use in Spanish Springs.
Allowing for a senior use in Spanish Springs.
Congregate care facility.
Congregate care. So I think the other item to mention on that, at the previous meeting, Regional Herd Stonegate, at the regional, Daybreak.
We got each other.
Daybreak. It was mentioned at this week's meeting that the approval of Daybreak at the Regional Planning Commission has been appealed to the Regional Planning Governing Board. So that was mentioned at the meeting as well. And I guess we have another meeting- And I guess we have another meeting next month. Okay. Next, staff announcements.
I actually do not have any announcements. We have had a series of city council meetings this week, three separate council meetings, and it's all tied to the budget, so nothing related to land use or zoning.
Excellent. Item eight, Commissioner's suggestions for future agenda items. Okay, seeing none. Item nine, public comment? For public comment and any action item or any general public comment? Michelle, do we have any request-to-speak forms under this item?
No, we do not.
Anyone wishing to make public comment on this item? I'll close public comment and bring it back to item 10, adjournment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Good night. Thank you, everyone.